All right, well, it's Verizon time at 6:15, so we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. So the first thing would be for Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Elizabeth Rise, get over here and put your heart, come on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, and just for the sake of the recording of the tape, we are in the November 23rd board meeting, and I would entertain a roll call at this time. Tracy?
Yes, Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Revard. Trustee Vanderhyde. Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager, here. Vice President Schaffner.
Here.
And President Reed.
Here. Thank you, and we do have everyone present, which is a quorum, so we will move on to the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde? Trustee Revard?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, the agenda is adopted as presented, and that brings us to gratitudes. If who would like to share a gratitude?
All right, I'll go first. Just would like to let everybody know how grateful I am about the leadership that we have in our district. Very difficult times, very difficult decisions. Very important to the students and the families in our district, and I am grateful that you and your group and handling it like champs and appreciate the heck out of what the leadership team's doing, so I'm grateful for that.
I'll go next in regards to the communication with the teachers, and once we went virtual, I tell you what, it's been fantastic. I'll throw a shout out to Mr. Myers. Mr. Myers, I mean honestly, like we went picked up a book today. Um, I tell you what, it's night and day from the spring, and so a shout out to our middle school teachers, it's just been fantastic. Like, I mean, our kiddos are, I know Ellie, she's not really happy about it, but she'll get over it. But honestly, like, they have them on task, on Zoom, on assignments, and, and I mean, I really, as a parent, strongly appreciate it, so I'll throw a shout out to the teachers, I know they're going above and beyond.
Yeah, I was actually gonna say the same, very similar, I mean, all three of my kids now remote, all different schedules, but just have really appreciated the communication with teachers, and as I have one child who struggles a little bit more, just the extra communication and attention has been, has been really appreciated. So very grateful for our team.
I'm grateful for the technology and just witnessing in my own dining room, the students talking with my husband Steve, and just their freshness, and they're happy to be connected through technology, so the way we've increased that, I'm just grateful for the kids because, and they're saying, you know, we'd rather be in school, and, but this, you know, this is working. So it's, it's much better than nothing, I mean, it's great, so grateful for that.
Yeah, I'm grateful for the capacity of this team to just undergo dynamic shifts in a very short window of time. So when we got up last Monday morning, our intent was to continue to go in-person K-6, and we, I at least didn't have anything on my radar in regard to the MyOSHA requirements to work from home. I mean, I knew it was there, but I didn't really, I wasn't thinking in terms of how it was gonna impact our work, because we were in person. But then, when we made the decision towards the end of the day on Monday to go remote K-6, just to watch Stacy and Jen spring into action and rally the teachers and the principals and the PLC leaders and the teacher leaders, it was amazing, and then to watch Matt and Chris tackle the MyOSHA plans and all the work that is required for that. You know, Tuesday, we had nothing on paper, really. We did a webinar with Trune, we did a webinar with Miller Johnson, and by middle of the day, late in the day Thursday, other Kent County school districts were using the work that Matt and Chris had put together as their templates as well. And so to me, that's just a remarkable testament to the quality of work that our team is able to put out in a very short period of time. It's not without stress, but, but they get it done, and it's, it's amazing.
I, when we get back to different, normal life, a real, a regular workday, we won't know what to do with it, we'll be like, whoa. So, no, thank you all for that. Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda, so I would entertain a motion for our consent items as they are presented.
So move.
I saw a support from Shannon. Okay, I'll call the votes. Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Trustee Revard?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser? Yep, and President Reed, yes, consent items are approved as presented. And that brings us to our first discussion item, which is the Cedar Springs Public Schools Extended Learning Plan Report with Jen and Chris.
Great, so I have already entered into our confirmation portion of the meeting that we're required to have, that we have had three moves to remote learning. The first one being November 9, that the high school went to remote learning, the second one being November 16 with the middle school, and then the district-wide closure with the elementaries moving on the 20th, and that our district-wide closure plan was implemented beginning on Friday the 20th. I don't know that there's anything additionally to add to that reconfirmation. We are, just for your information, surveying middle school and high school students at this time to find out how it's going for them, what they're finding as they're working remotely, we think that might be an important data point for us to consider in terms of what does our team need going forward, should we be required to stay remote, or should we come back to in-person and then have to go remote again? So we are using that data to help inform the decisions forward. Otherwise, I think our return to learn plan and our extended COVID learning plan, as were discussed last time, the schedules and the plans that we have are all staying as they are. So I would welcome any comments that you may have that would help inform our steps forward.
I had an input from a family with littles with elementary, and they appreciated the packets. Not always, we can always do the written packets, but for the littles, the parent was sharing that it, it was a nice transition into Zoom, but maybe did we want to think that forward a little bit further if this continues? Packets being provided, so whatever that does, sharing that thought.
Thanks Heidi, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and the rest of that document there attached in Board Book is really just the updated attendance numbers. If you have a chance to look at that, last meeting, we were halfway through October, so I've updated the rest of October and the first two weeks of November. We don't have any data in there from when we've switched to remote, so it'll be interesting in a month or so, when we come back and reconfirm this again to look at how our attendance is through the remote learning. But early indications, and Scott or Jen, you can maybe comment on this, but I believe yesterday, or maybe it was Friday, Brian Balding from the middle school said he heard one teacher, one class had 119 out of 120 kids that were live synchronous, so it's just one little snapshot, but hopefully that'll be, you know, the case across the board, so we'll see how it shakes out. Again, in order to be counted, students don't have to be in the live session, there's other ways to count them, but that's obviously the goal.
Any other questions from the board? Wonderings?
We got a phone call when my, I think my daughter probably slept in too late and missed a class, and we got a phone call from school that said, "Your daughter didn't come to school today." So they are looking a little bit at who's up at the Zoom meetings.
Wow.
Yep, Shannon, that was a conversation that the high school and middle school had early on to even consider, should we do that still? And we thought, based on the data that we had from the spring, that many parents weren't sure whether their students were doing the work or not doing the work, attending or not attending, this is a helpful point of conversation for families to know you were or were not actually in the instructional time today.
Yeah.
I wasn't complaining, I was just pointing that out as an observation.
There's someone in our office that has students at the high school that her son or daughter likes to sleep in, and she's received that call a few times, so it allows her to be on top of it.
I wish Cornerstone University did that. I had an oversleeper today. Yeah. Okay, anything further? All right, we can move on then, and that brings us to the public comment portion of our meeting, and this would be the time where the public can address the board for three minutes around any items that we would have on for action or things pertaining to the board. I don't, I see we have one attendee with us, I've not personally received any requests to address the board. So Scott, have you seen anything?
I did not receive anything electronically, no one submitted anything on the form that we have on the website. But again, if the panel, or excuse me, if the attendee would like to make a public comment, if they can indicate so by raising their hand in Zoom.
And the chat feature might be on as well.
Yeah, the chat feature is on. And seeing no chats and no hands raised.
Okay. All right, so if there is anyone listening that's not attending, you can always reach the board via our emails, which are posted on the website, and we would be happy to listen to any feedback or comments that we have from the community. So we'll move on to action, and we have no action items tonight, and that's just, that's fine. Then we move into our work session, so we'll be comfortable in our own spots where we are, not moving to our circle table. And we have up first, human services update with Matt Blood.
All right, so as Scott talked about earlier, this was one of those things that kind of snuck up on us a little bit. I remember MyOSHA coming out right after the Supreme Court ruling with their emergency order, and coming out with the MyOSHA emergency rules, and a lot, and reading through those, a lot of it was really stuff that we were already doing, such as having a preparedness plan, screening our, or doing health screening of our staff and recording that, and so forth. So a lot of it didn't really look like anything other than maybe they were following what schools have already been doing since this summer. And so then, as we got closer to going fully remote, there were some conversations that were being had of the MyOSHA rules, and some of the things that we need to make sure that we're careful in implementing. And so looking at that closer, going to those webinars with Miller Johnson and Trune, we realized that we had some work to do, and we had to do that rather quickly. And so one of the requirements of the MyOSHA emergency rules is that we have to determine what the risk exposure is for all of our staff. And you can see the different levels of risk. Schools typically fall into the medium exposure risk, and what that is, is that we will have contact with the public on that. The higher and the very high exposure areas are predominantly those that are gonna be involved with people that are COVID positive, such as health profession and so forth with that. So schools tend to be in the medium, lower exposure is more of independent workers and so forth that don't come into contact with those that could possibly be COVID positive. Like I said, we have to create a preparedness and response plan, very same title as what we already had approved by the board, and but this is different, this is more geared toward the worker, toward the employee and worker safety, of course, because it's under MyOSHA standards. And so there's some things within that plan that we don't have in our preparedness plan. And so we had to create this plan, and we did that this week as well. And then it has a lot of stuff about, you know, what types of, some similarities to what we have in our plan already in terms of what are we doing, like PPE, hygiene, and you know, surveillance such as health screening and training of our employees around COVID protection. And so we have a lot of that stuff already in place, we just need to make sure that we have it in this plan itself, and along with some of the policies and protocols that we expect our employees to follow as well. We have to establish the workplace procedures, and one of those things is that is a pretty important thing that MyOSHA is going to ask for if they ever come onsite, or they do an investigation or anything like that. They're gonna say, "Who are your site supervisors?" And it can be one person, it can be many people. It doesn't have to be an administrator, it could be a teacher, it's gotta be someone who's gonna be onsite when employees are onsite, and who's going to make sure that our COVID protocols are in place and being followed, as well as answering any questions around that in terms of symptoms or anything that someone might have a question about. And then all of the cleaning, and what are our procedures for working with people who are COVID positive, and so forth with that. So like I said, a lot of that, we already established our protocols, we already have them in place and have communicated them out to our staff and have been practicing it for quite some time with that. There's some industry-specific requirements, and, and that's really what's, what's part of the emergency rules. So what we did this week was, we had to first make a plan, but part of the plan, as you, and I already shared this with you in Board Books, so you can look through the preparedness plan and see the details that are involved in it and the breakdown of it, and it talks about all the different things that we've done and plan to do in working with protecting our employee group and making sure that they maintain a safe practice in that. But part of the plan was, we had to take our employee groups, and we had to do an audit on what is the risk factor that they have, and all of them fall into the medium risk range. But we also had to determine whether or not they could do their job remotely. And, and so we took every position, and through the work of our principals and other administrators, I really appreciate the work that they did, and to do it in such a short time period was, was quite impressive. And I, I can't say thank you enough to the work that they did with that. But we had to take each employee position and/or their employee group and determine, okay, can this employee or employee group do their work remotely? And if not, what aspects of their job do they, is it infeasible for them to do remotely that they have to be in person to do? And so most cases, that's kind of put on the onus of the employee, but in this case, MyOSHA is flipping that over and saying it's on the employer's shoulder to determine whether or not they can do their work remotely. And if they can't, we have to prove, or we have to give good reason to why they can't do that. So that took a lot of thoughtfulness to come up with, what are the factors of their role that they'll have to do in person? And then we, we have to be able to show that we've spent time developing that, and then it's quite a list of things that certain employee groups are gonna have to do because they have to do hands-on, or they have to have, they have to be present in the district in order to accomplish some of those tasks. And so we did that, and now we had to share the policy or our guidelines out with all, everyone in the district, and so that's attached as well to the Board Book. And what that is, is that's the guidelines that says, "We are prohibiting in-person work here in the district." You are required to work remotely unless it's not feasible. And so if it's not feasible, and this is all due during fully remote learning. So if we come back, then everyone else will come back as well. But under the MyOSHA rules, that if we go to fully remote again, then we would have to say, "You have to work remotely again," unless it's not feasible. And so there's groups of people that are going to fall into that audit where they can do their job remotely. Matt Blood's one of them. I, I can do everything that, pretty much everything that I can do, I can do remotely. It's not as easy, it's definitely not convenient, but I can do it remotely, and in the sake of trying to prevent spread, that's what they're asking us to do. But there are other people that don't have quality internet, or they have certain things, like they work and they're teaching labs for science class, and they need to have access to this equipment and so forth. They're gonna need to be able to work in person for some of those tasks, or very, a variety of reasons. So now we have a form that all these employees have access to, that they can request to work in person. And they had to send that to me, and then for my approval, and to allow them to be able to work in person. So if we ever get audited by MyOSHA, I have all of these requests that individuals have made, even though the audit of that position says, "No, they can do their job in person," that person can't. And so they, they filled that out, and that had to be done very quickly, because we're going remote on Friday. And so we spent a lot of time quickly getting these sent to me, signing them, scanning them in, sending them back to them and their supervisor so that they know. Back to the soup, the site supervisor, like I said before, it can be a number of people. And so we have a list of all the people that we're naming as the site supervisors based on, and really, we only need one. We're saying the site is the district, and so any of these people, if they're onsite, when, whenever there's an employee in, on the property, we have to have someone onsite that's a site supervisor. And so here's a list that we feel are, will cover any situation, any circumstance that might present itself, so that we can always be able to say, "We, we've been in compliance with the rules on that." So in a nutshell, that's really what the work that we did in this last week to prepare for our, us going fully remote on that. I think I've covered everything in that, if there's questions that you have, I am available to answer them.
I just want to say thank you, that was a massive undertaking. That's like, just having to write a whole management plan, just like nothing, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I do appreciate MyOSHA giving us the template to work out of, which was something that did accelerate the process. And I appreciate the work that was done by the team earlier this summer in preparing for our, I mean, the preparedness plan that we already have established, we could pull a lot of that stuff to add to it. So we didn't have to reinvent the wheel, but also it was, it was, it was a little easier, because we're already doing it. So I could just sit with Ken, and we could go through, what are all the disinfectants that we're using? And in what way are we using them? And, you know, what, how do you spell it, you know? That's, and it was something that we were able to put together pretty quickly, but it did take a team to do that. I couldn't have put it together by myself, so I appreciate the work that everyone did.
Any questions from the board?
Just curious, do you have an idea of how many staff are still on campus?
Yes. But I did not prepare for you to ask me that question.
That's, that's okay.
It's, it's in the, it's right around 80 something, 84, something like that.
That's fine, I wasn't looking for an exact number, I just wondered if
Prepared for, though, I mean, I was not thinking we were gonna have that many, and we have a number of people that have various reasons why they are planning on it, and, or that they need to be here. And some of them, some, like I, in the, in those forums, some of them were in the audit as they need to be. Like I had a principal fill out a form, "Well, we already have it in the audit" that building principles will need to be able to work in person for all these tasks, and it's quite a list of that, you know, some of that kind of stuff, we have some requests for that, you know?
Sure.
But I think 80 something, 84, 86 total requests.
Was that total requests, Matt, or was that 84 requests that you approved? Because there were several people that you didn't approve, because they didn't meet the standard.
Right, yeah, there were some standards that, that Miller Johnson and the other legal teams kind of said, "MyOSHA is not gonna accept those as reasons for working in person." It's too important that we mitigate the spread right now. And so one of the reasons was, you know, "I need to be here, because my kids are at home, and I need to work, and I need to stay focused, and I'm gonna do much more, much better work in my classroom than I would at home with all the distractions." MyOSHA says, "There's no way that we would accept that, anything dealing with productivity." You have to figure out ways to become more productive at home, because it's that important. Another reason is, if someone were to want to come here, because other people are here, and I'm at home by myself, and for mental health reasons, I need to be around people, so I, I need to be able to work at school for that reason. And that is not another, that's another reason that MyOSHA will not accept at this time for that. There were some others too, but really, you know, you really had to, you really had to look at it and say, you know, does, is that something that really has to be done here? Or can we find a way to help them to be able to do it remotely? So, yeah.
Well, I'll stress Heidi's comment of, "Well done," in such a short amount of time, because that sounds like a lot to do, so nice job.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Matt, and team.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on then to the operations update.
So I'm So I'm actually going to take that one. So Ken put together a couple of slides for us to use for this evening, and I did link those into board book as well. So really, the operations update is broken down into three parts, so the first just talks about. The responses from the team so far this fall in regard to COVID nineteen. So you can see that the bulk of their work really has been centered on PPE and making sure that the supply chain was. Taking care of the needs for students and staff throughout the district with face masks, shields, gowns, gloves. Safety glasses, hand sanitizer, wipes. Acrylic dividers and sneeze guards, and really, that's, that's been one segment of their work. The other piece is in regard to the cleaning and disinfecting protocols. And GRBS and their team has really put forth a great effort. To make sure that our spaces were physically cleaned, not only were they providing the people. To do that work, but also providing the insight in things that they've learned from other organizations and from the GRBS. Districts and, and locations throughout the state, so they've really used what they're learning from other spaces to help make our operation. More efficient and more functional in terms of providing clean and disinfected spaces for our students and our staff. To, to engage in, the students and staff, according to Ken and the team, really have been outstanding so far throughout this process. There's been a great deal of cooperation at, at all levels. The sanitizing stations, the hand sanitizing stations in each of the classrooms, halls. Offices distributed throughout sporting areas have been utilized, and they know that they're being utilized because. Of the rates at which they're having to refill the hand sanitizer. There are signs everywhere throughout the district and, and those have been helpful as well. With, with many arrows and hall, divided hallways to indicate directional flow for traffic. And then last, just even as we're shifting into remote learning, we still have people on campus. And so the GRBS team is going to be heavily engaged in the work of. Making sure that our spaces continue to be cleaned and disinfected on a daily basis. The next piece, just in terms of the operations and, and the workflow that's being done throughout campus. So despite the pandemic, we still have accomplished the completion of. Eight hundred eleven work orders from early September through today. We installed a new playground for our early childhood, our GSRP students over at Red Hawk with fencing and sidewalk. Sections installed, we put traffic barriers up and directional signs to help flow the traffic around campus. We were very mindful of increased traffic flow on campus. With potential for a decrease in the number of students riding the buses and an increase in. Parents dropping students off, and so we wanted to make sure that traffic flow on campus was as safe and as functional as we could. We replaced the roof at the high school, also the gym floor has been refinished. The baseball and softball fields have been prepped and put to get, put to bed for winter. As they've groomed the infield and, and made those spaces ready for the dormant season, the upcoming months. We're actually in the process of putting together the timeline and the workflow. For the replacement of the lights at the middle school gym, we're actually going to be replacing those fluorescent lights. With LED lights over break, and so we're excited to see the increase, not only in the brightness of the room. But also the decrease in costs of, of lighting that space when we're. Having contests and practices in class in the gym. They've groomed the shot put and disc areas for outside, cleaned up some various storms with trees and, and limbs. That was some power outage issues as a result of some high wind storms over the last few weeks. The boilers are fired up and ready for the heating season, and then they also implemented a new. iPad usage protocol for maintenance staff to help them log their work and stay up to date. On the work orders at a, at a greater level of efficiency. The last thing that I want to show you is just a quick one-minute video of the work that was done at the high school. On the repair, so I'm going to grab this link and let you take a look at this. That's the beginning. And that's the end. So again, just a, a great. Visual reminder of the work. That they were able to do in really a short period of time to transform the, the look of that gym. So hopefully you, you were able to see that the change that took place over, over time, it was neat because. They utilized some input from students in determining the ultimate design on the floor. And we were excited about that, it's just a neat way to get the leaders, student leaders involved. In programming that they're really impact their home where they live. So any questions for operations and maintenance?
I think, Chris, you can answer this, I'm pretty sure that was all paid for by insurance money because of the damage.
Yeah, it sure was, so we worked with SETSEG, who is our property casualty insurance company carrier. And they had us bid it, made sure that they were okay with the price of all that, and then did all the work, so. Yep, nothing coming out of general fund or sinking fund or anything at all.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Any operations issues? All right, all right, we're good, we'll move on, thank you Scott for that part, part. We'll move on to the organizational meeting planning for January eleventh. And Scott and I put in board book the, the Neola definitions of the officers. And we had talked, when we have that meeting in January, and it's kind of awkward and the whole thing. So we thought, okay, we're going to start earlier this year, so it's less awkward and we just roll with it, so here we are doing awkward in November twenty-third. But, so we throw those out there for what the job duties of the officers were, if anybody didn't know or wanted to know more. We're always willing to share more of that, and leading with what Scott has modeled for us of what we want to. Start doing and stop doing and keep doing. If there's anything the board wants to share right now that we can talk about or thinking for January. We, we do say have our same board, we did not have any replacements for the election, which we're grateful. So I'm opening up to the board, here we are, is there anything you'd like to discuss? And thoughts for going forward in January? I think we're pretty candid with each other throughout the year, I can say I've got a pretty good feel where. Everyone shares what they're thinking, so unless somebody's really holding back a secret, they're like, oh, I've just never talked about this before. I, I think we all know where we all are, so if not, we can, we can move on if there's no. Okay, all right, Scott, did you have anything with that?
Nope, I did not.
Okay. All right, okay.
I'll, I'll just throw this on there. Since someone needs to talk, I think it should be me, I think that. Us as a board, you know, I, I've gone through quite a lot over the years on the board and. I'm very grateful for everybody on here now, and Heidi, I think you've done an excellent job. Helping us, leading us, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And I, I don't know that I would change much, really. I think things are running smoothly and very appreciative of that, so thank you again.
Thank you, I will second what Matt said, I totally agree, I mean, we're a very cohesive board. A little bit of diversity and stuff, but I think that's what makes us really good and makes our district the way it is. So I'm, I'm really happy with the way things are, and thank you Heidi for all, for everything you've done, I really appreciate it.
You're very welcome, thank you. And I.
I will say, being the president, I've, I've done it once and I know it's a tough job, so thank you for that, Heidi.
I am going to say that you all being approachable, and I know I could call and ask your opinion, it does make the job easier. And of course, working with Scott and team and, and that organization has come, so I appreciate all that as well. All right, we'll move on to communication and Board of Education, I don't have anything specific. We do only have one board meeting in December, unless we should have to have a special meeting for some reason. But as far as communication, I don't have anything, does anybody else from the board have any piece from MASP or anything like that that I've missed? Okay.
I'm assuming everybody's getting emails from MASP and. There's a lot of classes coming up and going on all the time, so I know I've been looking at a few myself. Probably going to be jumping on that here pretty soon, so. I did have a question about campus kids. And just wondering where that was at, I, I kind of, I wrote it down, but forgot to mention it during. Matt's presentation, so I just wanted to circle back on that, if that's okay.
No, thank you, yeah, I can take that one, so we were really struggling, to be honest, with campus kids. Trying to determine how best to staff that, that program consistently for the families. And we were facing, we are facing the same challenges with campus kids staffing as we are with our K-12 staffing. And so initially, we were looking at not being able to open campus kids. For that window of closure between November twenty and December eight. That we were closed for K-six, well, actually, pre-K-12 instruction. And we knew that that was not a positive thing for many of our families. You know, initially, in the event that we were shifting to fully remote, the intent was to have. Campus kids fully staffed with internal staff members shifting around. So that we could provide daycare for teachers and staff members who needed that support. But then with the complications from the my OSHA guidelines and not having staff reporting to work. Then it was no longer the case to have that significant shift of staff over to campus kids. And so, you know, now we were looking at only having a need for a handful of classrooms for campus kids. And so we redeployed staff back into supporting the K-12 program as that ultimately is our, our priority. Late in the week, it came to my attention that we had a group of. Partners from Spectrum Health, our school health aides who were in need of deployment. Initially, we were thinking that they would possibly be deployed back at Spectrum Health as their parent organization. But we worked with the team at Spectrum Health and were able to keep those people on staff. And so that addition of those extra six people is going to allow us to be able to open campus kids back up. Just for the families that initially had signed up, so we, we're going to be opening two classrooms or two spaces for campus kids. It's going to serve roughly eleven families, we're going to pod those families. Together in groups, so rather than having a lower L and an upper L room, we're going to have. All the students K-six together based on family. We're, we're excited about the strength that those school health aides bring to the table as far as just knowledge. Of, you know, working with students with symptoms, but also just. That background and information around PPE and how we can keep those spaces safe for, for everyone involved. And, and so starting back up on November thirty, we are going to be able to open campus kids. For the families in the community that originally had signed up, and we're planning on that. So many of the frontline workers in, in, in healthcare professionals in the community, we are going to continue to be able to provide that need. So I appreciate the question and the, the willingness from, from Spectrum to continue to work with us, you know, it goes back to that. You know, E-three from our flight plan, it's, you know, working with those synergistic relationships. To help support our team and to help support our community, and so Spectrum was excited because they didn't. They were afraid that if we redeployed those individuals into the Spectrum system, that we'd lose them, we wouldn't get them back. And so really, it's better for their individuals, and ultimately, it's better for our team to be able to have those people on campus. And be able to redeploy, once we go back to in-person instruction, and we will. We know that those people will be able to continue to move forward with us in this partnership.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Okay, anything else from the board? Okay, Scott, did you have communication? Oh, you do.
Yeah, Chris had one thing, so we'll let him go first, I think this is the first time Chris has grabbed the mic so far tonight in the meeting, so.
I've, I've answered a few questions, but I was actually thinking this is the least I've spoken, I think, since I've been here, so a nice little relief for everybody. Yeah, I apologize, you know, back typical, when we have the audit, as soon as we have it bound, I would hand you all a copy of that audit. At the next board meeting, but it came to our attention last board meeting. That didn't happen because we were remote and I never sent you the, the financial statements, the final audit. So that is attached in board book for your reading pleasure, please let me know, of course, if you have any questions at all. And just if anyone is listening and, and if you ever speak to anybody and they're interested in such things. As soon as we have those, they're posted to our budget transparency page that pops up out of the corner of the website as soon as that. As soon as you log on, but yeah, in the future, if we are remote, hopefully not through another audit, I'll be sure to get that sent to you guys as soon as we have it. So that's the board book for you.
Thank you.
Betcha, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, I did browse all the sixty-seven pages, I think.
Lies in there, yeah.
Yeah, and the only thing, the only other thing I wanted to share was, you know, they often say that imitation is a, one of the greatest forms of flattery known to. Known to humankind, and you know, I lifted up the work of. And the leadership that Jen and Stacy have brought to the table around the, the teaching and learning component and the student services component. And lifted up the work of Matt and Chris around the, the work that we talked about tonight with the my OSHA guidelines. But, you know, I, I, we share information as a county on a regular basis from district to district. You know, when one district is doing something really well, the superintendents and the teams are very free. To, to move information back and forth to not only serve, you know, our, our. Our own districts well, but also to serve those around us in need. The percentage of information flowing out of Cedar Springs into other, into other districts is. By far exceeding the information that's flowing in, so again, just our team is doing great things. And, and it's just, it's, it's remarkable to see how others are benefiting. From the work of our team as well, both near, so other districts right here in. In Cedar Springs are benefiting from our work, but also districts throughout the county are benefiting from, from the work of our team. So, great job, I can't lift them up high enough.
That's wonderful news, and who knew? That's wonderful news. And who knew when we were writing the flight plan and deciding the name for it and all those things, what it would actually be serving during this time. And it served above and beyond what we even dreamed, how it could guide. So thank you for that vision, Scott, also.
And we're just getting started.
If COVID wasn't in the way.
No, what in the world?
All right, we've learned, we've learned some things well, that will keep and will let the other ones go when all in good time. So that we will. Okay, so planning, I think we've planned and if I'm missing, anybody have anything for planning? I think we've covered. Any questions? Okay. All right, with that, it is seven oh six and we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much for zooming in.